Welcome to the Auburn Board of Selectmen meeting, Tuesday, November 12, 2019. It's now 7:00, and per the open meeting law, is there anybody in this room recording the meeting for tonight? Being none, may we all rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Hopefully, you can all bear with me tonight. I've got a little bit of a frog in my throat, but we're going to get through this. First, we have public comments. We have no public comments. And so we'll...
Please.
Public hearings, we have a tax classification hearing at 7:10. And we've got a few minutes. So what I'd like to do is I would like to move up... Communications, we're going to try to go through this if we can. Under Communications, we don't have any. Under the Board of Selectmen, General Items, is there anybody here from Action Bulk Distributors? Okay, there's nobody here. Can I have a motion to move up item 5B?
Some of them.
And C?
Second.
E. Motion remains seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so under 5B, we have gift acceptances. Okay, so the gift acceptances for tonight is for the Police Department, Robert Briggs in memory of John Porrigs. And it's for $100.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I believe that says, "In memory of John Briggs." Yeah, I mean...
In memory of, the way it's drafted, it looks like it's...
It does, it does.
But I'm sorry, we'll make that correction. Robert Briggs in memory of John Briggs. And it's $100 to the Police Department. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Goodrich. And then to the Fire Rescue Department, Roberta Briggs in memory of John Dave Briggs. $100 to the Fire Department gift account. And from Masterman's, $500 to the Fire Department gift account. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. We have under 5C, Proclaimations or Recognizations. We have none in front of us tonight. And so we have 5D, which is vote to execute the grant easement of National Grid for Jerome Avenue as authorized by our past town meeting, Article 21, October 15. And Ms. Jacobson?
As for the Chair, as you mentioned, this is a vote of town meeting to grant an easement to National Grid to conduct work on the Jerome Ave station, which is important for us to get done. So it's recommended that the Board just take a vote this evening to approve the grant of easement. And I have the original document as prepared by Attorney Henigan for each of your signature. And then we can go ahead and record the easement.
Is there any comments, questions? Being none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we execute the grant of easement to National Grid for Jerome Avenue as authorized by Article 21 of the October 15, 2019 special town meeting.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I've got the document here to sign. And we'll pass that right along so we can get that signed and move that right along for tonight. Give it a minute.
Motion to move up agenda item 6A.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, under Town Manager Items, we have a request from the Assistant DPW Director for surplus equipment. And we have a letter here from the Assistant DPW Director, Jeff Mitchell. And it looks like the surplus equipment is ransoms walk behind mower and a second walk behind mower. And that's what they have in front of us tonight. Is there any questions, comments? Being none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to declare the two mowers that are listed in the memorandum from Jeff Mitchell of October 31 to be placed as surplus equipment for disposal purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. I guess before we go any further into this, I'll go back to see if anybody from Action Bulk Distributors is here. Okay. What I'd like to do is table that for now, and we can come back to that later.
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe there's anything else we can address before the tax classification hearing, so I'll make a motion that we have a brief recess till 7:10.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are in recess. We are back from our brief recess. And now what we have on the agenda is for 7:10, the tax classification hearing. This hearing is held in accordance with Chapter 40 and Chapter 56, as amended by Chapter 469 of the Acts of 1982 and Chapter 79 of the Acts of 1983. And I will turn it over to Ms. Jacobson to begin our hearing.
Certainly, thank you. Through the Chair, to the Board members and those in the public as we do each year.
May I just interrupt you for a second? Can we have a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Ms. Jacobson.
I couldn't wait. I had to get that out. Sorry. So as we do each year, we have a presentation from our assessor, Cindy Clausgrove. And per the will of the Board, generally, we like to have Cindy present first. And then the Board can ask questions of Cindy and then probably open it up to members in the public. So if that's okay, we'll have Cindy come up and give a presentation.
That'd be great. So would you call him Cindy for us?
Great.
Thank you.
Cindy, you're going to go for me? And I should say, Seth Bogard is also joining her. He is our Assistant Assessor.
Thank you.
Good evening. What I'm going to do is go through the presentation. The beginning part of it, I think we've all heard before. We're just kind of just reiterating what this is for, what it's about, and the votes that are going to be taken tonight. So just keep in mind that the calculations for the tax rate and all the other numbers are estimated as of the time that I prepared this report. There may be additional informational slides or handouts that are not part of the presentation tonight. So the purpose of this classification hearing is mass general law. Chapter 40, Section 56 allows for a shift in the tax burden between property classes. This does not change the term tax levy for the community. It simply determines the share to be borne by each class. What the hearing does not do is it does not determine the tax rate. That's not what we're here to do tonight. Classification does not determine how much money can be raised. Town meeting voters determine what the tax levy will be. So the tax levy is determined by town meeting appropriations and expenditures, state and county charges. And it is paid for by using town revenues, excise, fees, enterprise, and other available funds, the total taxable real estate and personal property, state aid and reimbursements, new growth, and debt exclusions and overrides. The role of the assessor in this process is to value property for the purpose of equitable taxation, administer abatements and exemptions, and be a resource to taxpayers, explain the classification options to the Board of Selectmen.
With the white crosses.
Oh, yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Is that better? No?
Is that microphone on?
Hello?
That's better.
That's better?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I have to talk right into it. Okay. So this is just an overview of the revaluation process. Residential properties are adjusted annually to full and fair market value. Attributes affecting value include the condition, the interior, exterior features, and the size. Commercial industrial properties, the values there are based on an income approach to value per the Department of Revenue requirements. And personal property is done on a net book value minus depreciation methodology. This was an actual recertification year for the town. So this year, the Department of Revenue came in and they actually did a certification of all of the values for this year. The four votes that are going to be taken here tonight is a vote on the residential factor, a vote on the open space discount, a vote on a residential exemption, and a small commercial exemption. The residential factor, that's the one that we think of with it. That's the one that shifts the rate between the residential and the commercial properties. So the tax levy is, you have, these are just some terms. The levy limit is the maximum amount that the town can levy in a given year. That number is equal to last year's tax levy plus this year's new growth plus 2.5%. The maximum allowable levy is the levy limit plus any debt exclusions and overrides that the town has approved. And then the excess levy capacity is the current levy limit minus what the town actually levies. So this year's calculations, you'll see that the fiscal year 2019 levy limit was 44,823,850. We've added the 2.5% allowable levy increase. And then we have fiscal year 2020 new growth of 931,088. And there were no overrides. So the 2020 levy limit is 46,875,534. And the debt exclusion this year is 2,935,281. So the maximum levy that we could use this year would be 49,867,587. This is just showing you a comparison of the makeup of the town in 2008 versus the makeup of the town currently in 2020. This is based on the valuation of the properties before the split. So you'll see that the makeup of Auburn has changed a little bit. A larger section of the town is now valued as commercial, but it hasn't changed strikingly. This is something I had prepared. Just to give people an idea, we hear a lot of people come in and they talk about, why is the tax rate in Auburn higher than someplace like Shrewsbury? Why does Shrewsbury have such a beautiful low tax rate? But what you have to keep in mind is this is a comparison of two houses. You have one on the left that sold in Shrewsbury versus one on the right that sold in Auburn. When you take the sale price and you look at 95% of the value of the sale price, which is about where the assessed value should be, you'll see that even though the tax rate in Shrewsbury is lower, because the values in Shrewsbury are substantially higher, that the taxes are actually higher in Shrewsbury. And if you look at this, this is basically an exercise that tells you the cost of the services from town to town is fairly stable. You may get there different ways with different tax rates and different assessed values, but there's still a basic cost for services. This is just kind of showing you what the residential change due to revaluation from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 20. And you will see in the chart that this year, for fiscal year 2020, the two and three families have seen the largest increase. Apartments four and up have seen a fairly large increase. We have seen an increase in the single families over the previous years and the condos. But the most striking is the two and three families. The factors that drive the tax rate, the debt exclusions. We will be getting to the point where we're leveling off the excluded debt for the Auburn schools in the upcoming fiscal year. So that should help suppress the tax rate a little bit. We have demolitions and depreciation. Some of the demolitions are due to weather problems and some of the demolitions are simply due to people buying the properties and tearing the buildings that are there down. When the properties go off the tax rolls or decrease in value, that does have a negative effect on the total valuation of the town. And then we had the Auburn Mall construction. For the past few years, the value of the mall has been depressed by that construction. And now with the completion of Reliant Medical Center, it's now had a positive effect. For fiscal year 2020, for new growth, the residential new growth is down. Commercial new growth is up. That's largely due to Reliant Medical. The industrial growth is slightly up, but not a significant increase for industrial at all. And personal property growth is a little bit down. This next chart, it just kind of graphically shows you. Are we good to go?
Are we all set to continue?
Close that door.
Oh, thank you.
So this is just showing you the growth changes in a chart rather than in numbers. And this is just showing you between 2006 and 2019. Back in 2006, you can see the differential in the tax rate between the commercial industrial properties. And you'll see in 2019, we're coming closer to leveling that difference off. And this just runs you through basically the cost to do business in Worcester County. These are some of the more comparable towns. And you'll see that right now, Auburn's tax rate is still up there next to Worcester. If you look at the beginning, you'll see Grafton, Milbury, Oxford, Lester, and Shrewsbury are all kind of down. Sturbridge is a little bit higher. But then you have Worcester, which is the most expensive. And then Auburn is secondary to that. And this is a chart which Ed does every year. He does this at town meeting. And this is just showing you, we have built up the excess levy capacity. This year, the excess levy capacity is projected to be at almost $6 million. This is all money that we have not levied. When we could levy 2.5%, we have levied significantly less than that over the course of the years, and we're building up reserves. And this just kind of runs you by the effect of these split rates on the commercial industrial assessments. Bringing you through Property A, you have a higher tax rate. You have a lower net operating income. And the result is a lower assessment. So they're going to pay less taxes for that reason. Property B, you have the lower tax rate. You have the higher income. The result is a higher assessment. So they kind of balance themselves out. This is just to kind of equalize, show you how you would equalize the value changes this year. In 2019, if you had a property that was valued at $200,000, their tax bill for last year would be $3,684 with a tax rate of $18.42. This year, with the increase in value of 5.43 for the residential properties, that same property would be valued at $210,860. In order to get the same tax bill, the residential rate would actually have to go down to about $17.47 per thousand. So the first vote that the Board of Selectmen are going to take is on the residential discount. That is up to a 20% discount that is applied to owner occupied residential properties. It shifts the burden from the less expensive homes onto the higher priced homes and non-resident homes. It works best in communities with a large amount of vacation homes or non-owner occupied properties to shift the burden onto. In a town like Auburn, with the makeup of Auburn, basically, all it would do is pit one class of residents against another. It would not really accomplish what you would want it to. The vote on the small commercial exemption. Auburn has been doing this for a number of years now. It has no effect on the residential and personal property. The industrial properties do not qualify for this exemption, but they do share the burden for it. The exemption here goes to the property owner, not the businesses. It relies on a trickle down effect of the property owners sharing it with the tenants. For multi-business properties, all the businesses on their property must qualify. The total value of the property must be less than $1 million. And it must have less than 10 employees in each business that's located on the premises. This is a very cumbersome thing for us to administer. Basically, we must go through a list of businesses that's given to us annually by the Department of Workforce Development. And we have to qualify each property by the businesses located there. Businesses that are not on the list must be DBAs to be qualified by the assessor. Small incorporated businesses must be on the list. Each year, all properties not on the list need to file applications with the Board of Assessors. So this shifts the tax rate up to 10%. And that's voted at the same time as the commercial exemption would be. It shifts it by 10% between the properties occupied by the qualifying businesses onto the other commercial and industrial properties. Applications are taken after the tax classification hearing and processing can delay setting the tax rate. Because we've been doing it for a number of years, we are now speeding that process up and we're actually sending the applications out a little bit ahead, just noting to people that it's pending the Board of Selectmen voting to continue the exemption. So if you apply that small commercial exemption to Auburn, what you'll see is that at the various shifts, it changes the tax rate by about between 12 and 13 cents. And this next slide, it's easier to just kind of look at it and look at the numbers rather than have me read the whole thing. This just gives you an idea of each tier of properties, what the effect of qualifying for the exemption versus not qualifying for the exemption would have an effect on your taxes. So the historic trends for the town of Auburn, back when I came here in 2006, you were at 1.62. You dropped down in 2007. And you can see that you made big progress between 2009 and 2010. You went down about 14 points. And then you've been going steadily down. We kind of leveled off in 2014, 15, and 16. And then again in 17 and 18. But last year, we did shift down to 1.17. And you can see, if you look at the personal property, the growth trends, it's kind of a zigzag chart. But the overall trend for growth in that period is up for commercial properties. This is the projected rate chart for fiscal year 2020. You will see at a rate of 1, the projected tax rate would be $19.19. The chart does make an assumption that you do continue to do the small commercial exemption, which is why the commercial industrial rate is different. But if you did not do the commercial exemption, the commercial rate would be 1919 as well. At the current split, which is 1.17, you would see, you'll see that the residential tax rate will be $17.91. And your commercial rate would be $22.58. So both of those rates would be down this year. So this brings you through the scenario of what the impact of splitting the tax rate is on the average residential property and what they can expect to see for a tax bill. Okay. And this next chart actually shows you the impact dollar wise on the various properties as you shift. It shows you at a rate of 1%, 1.12, 1.15, 1.6, 120, and 125. So it shows you, if you went from the 117 where you are this year, if you shift by 1, it basically will have an impact of about $20 on the residential properties. This next chart, it's a little hard to read from the screen. But this actually equalizes everything. What this does is it steps the commercial properties, the residential property, each tier of properties, through the difference between last year's value, last year's tax rate. And then the second, the other, the right side of it will bring you through this year's median value, this year's tax, you know, what the tax rate would be this year. And you can see the percentage of change in those tax bills. This year, what I did is you have it at the current rate of 1.17. I did it at a rate of 1. I can't read it. I can't even read that, that's too little. So I did it at a rate of 1, a rate of 1.10, 1.13, 1.14, 1.15, and 1.16. And the very top line is at the 1.17 that we're at this year. So it will show you that if we stayed at the current rate with the changes in the value and the changes in the tax rates, where each of the bills for these properties would be. And this is showing you a comparison of where Auburn's tax bill stands in conjunction with the rest of the state and the county averages. You'll see that we're good, almost $1,000 less than the state average, a little bit less than that on the county. But Auburn is still actually lower than most, than where Worcester County is for residential properties. And this is just a chart kind of showing you where the median home values have gone over the years for the assessed values. And this next slide, this will show you what would happen if we levy to the max. Right now, we are building up an excess levy capacity. If we decided to use that money and actually levy to the max, you'll see that the average residential bill would go up by $596 a year. The average commercial bill would go up at $3,541 per year. So that's a substantial amount of savings that by compressing the budget that we have, that we've managed to keep. And this is just a sample of what the form that the Board of Selectmen are going to sign once all is said and done this year. And it shows you on the second page, this is what our excess levy capacity is projected to be. It will change either up or down depending on the various options that are chosen, but it should be right in that area. it should be right in that area. And then the very last page, this is a copy of the rate chart. It goes to one point, from 1 to 1.17, but if anybody would like to see a full rate chart, I do have one that goes up to 1.15 that's available. And I think that is it.
Mr. Chairman, yes. I just wanted to add to that.
Good evening. I just want to draw everyone's attention to page 34. I know Cindy and I had discussed the impacts of the debt exclusions on the tax rate. I don't know if that's...
I'm going to skip this one, I'm sorry.
So we do have it up on the...
It's labeled 10 in your page.
Wanted to know. It's actually after page 33, but it's labeled page 10. So what we wanted to show everyone tonight is what the net tax rate would be if we backed out the debt exclusion. So the cost or the burden of carrying the debt for the Auburn middle school, new middle school, and the Auburn high school represents about $1.20 on the tax rate, on the residential rate, and about $1.51 on the commercial-industrial. So if you net that out at the estimates that Cindy has presented tonight at a rate of 117, the actual residential tax rate at 117 with the debt exclusion is $17.91. If you subtract out the debt exclusions, it'd be $16.71. On the commercial-industrial, 2258 to 2107. So that is a substantial amount of money that we require to raise based upon voter mandate to construct those two facilities.
Thank you. Julie, anything else? Okay. Well, I'll turn it over to Board members for questions, and then we'll turn it over to anybody in the audience that cares to make any comments. Does anybody got anything? Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cindy, if we can go back to page 20. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the effect of split rates. So I think we just kind of brushed over that a little bit. If you could just go into that a little, in a little more detail.
Okay, certainly. Commercial-industrial properties, unlike residential properties, are valued by an income approach to value. So basically, what we're showing in this chart, if you have two properties, you have, one of them is in, let's say, Worcester, we'll leave Auburn neutral, and the other property is in Shrewsbury. That property in Worcester is going to have higher taxes because you have a higher tax rate. So basically, that's part of their operating, it's going to bring their operating income down. It's going to lower that. And the result is, when you bring that down and you cap out their, their income, you're going to have a lower value. So by having the higher tax rate, you actually lower the value of a property that you're going to use towards multiplying by that tax rate. And you have the second property in Shrewsbury, you have a much lower tax rate, you have a much higher net operating income, you cap out that income, the result is going to be a higher assessment to multiply by the tax rate. So it's, basically, what happens is sometimes when you change that split and you raise the tax rate, what you're actually doing is devaluing your commercial-industrial properties so that you have a lower tax base to levy against.
I made notes, sorry.
Okay.
I had something on page 14, which I think we just addressed, the value of the debt. I had a note, page 14, value of the debt exclusion, which we just addressed. And page 21, the equalizing. So the information is just based on the residential rate for equalizing?
Yes.
There's no information on equalizing a commercial?
Yes, it's based on the residential properties. It's very difficult to do it across the board with commercial-industrial properties because they changed at different rates, so you can't really grab onto one rate. It would be a lot of information on one slide, but I did only do it on the residential properties.
And one more, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Just if you can just talk about the revaluations, how the process, how they're done, whether it's just residential to family, commercial, and how often it's done, please, just talk about that a little bit.
Okay. Auburn actually was one of the lucky communities. The Department of Revenue has now gone to a five-year cycle. We were lucky enough to get left on the three-year cycle, so we had a full revaluation this year. Now Seth Strab, he's the Assistant Assessor, Seth is out in the field. What he's doing is measuring listing properties, making sure that the data we have on file on the properties is up to date and accurate. We do, every 10 years at a minimum, each property has to be visited. We visit every sale property. We leave a tag. We, if we can get, you know, through the houses, we try to get into the houses. If not, we do the exterior of all the sales. Any property that's had a building permit, once again, Seth goes out, he measures it, makes the changes on the cards for the building permits. Once that process is complete, then the revaluation process is, it's a modeling process. For the residential properties, what we're doing is we're looking at the sales, we're looking at the land sales, we're valuing the land, then we're coming up with a value for those improvements on it, setting depreciation schedules based once again on the sales. Once we have a model that's working for the sales and we're, and it's accurately predicting where the sales were, then it's applied electronically across the entire database for the residential properties, and the values are established. For commercial-industrial properties, that process is a little bit different. It's done on an income basis. So every year, we send out income and expense forms that all these business owners get and grumble, and they're, because they're very cumbersome to fill out. But basically, what we're doing is we're getting the information that we need to produce the values. And we're looking to establish market rents for various types of properties, market expenses for the various types of properties, and then we're valuing them accordingly. And once again, once we have a model that works, it is applied uniformly across the database to all the properties. That's why when Seth goes out to collect the data, it's very important that he has a chance to get to see everything and make sure those cards are up to date and accurate.
And I have one completely unrelated question to the presentation, but certainly for this evening, and it is for Cindy. I know that you here each year are concerned about hearing from seniors, maybe disabled individuals, veterans who are concerned about their tax rate. And I know that we've done a lot to offer relief for that. So twofold, if you can talk a little bit about what we've done over the last couple of years and give us an update as Selectmen as to how it's, basically how it's working. Are people taking advantage of it? Are they aware of it? Can we do better? Because I know we've worked hard for the last couple of years to be sure that we can offer this, this relief, so if you could, please.
Okay. What we did this year is we met as a group, and we made some changes to the existing programs. We have expanded the limits that we can for the amount of assets a senior can have. We have expanded on the amount of income that they can have as well. We have raised those limits so more people will qualify. On the senior exemptions, which are the highest exemption that go to the neediest people, we have expanded not only the qualifications, but we've expanded the exemption amount. So now we're not only doubling those, but we're also factoring them up further than that. We have lowered the age all the way down to 65. When we first started off years ago, it was at 70. We went down to 68. We are now at 65. We have a Veterans Workoff Program. We currently only have one person who's using it. We have lowered our interest rate on our real estate deferral programs for both hardship and for seniors. Once again, they're highly underused programs. We have gone out and tried doing outreach at the senior center when they had their fair. It's, I think a lot of it is, we need to get the information out there. The senior center has their senior workoff program, the tax workoff program for the elderly, and we don't have enough elderly people that are in the program to go around to the town departments. So as I said, I think some of it is, we simply aren't getting the message out there, and I'm not sure what more we can do.
Okay, thank you. That's the sense that I had, that, you know, we've worked on, on offering these, you know, programs, and I don't think that we have enough people taking advantage of it. So, you know, that's something I'd like to see us...
And the other issue with the programs is, people don't realize, when you look at the tax rate, I mean, you change it by a percent, the bill is, the average bill's going to go up $20 or down $20. Some of these exemption programs, these are $500, $600, $700 in the first year, and they can go up to $2,000 by the time you're finished. So there's substantial exemptions that are available, and we need to get the word out to them.
So just one last thing on this, and I think, I know the town manager and the Select Board is aware of this, that we did receive a petition regarding this. You know, and I'd like to, you know, work with that list to make sure that the people on that list are aware of the program, because it's not, it's not just, it's not just lowering my taxes, it's making sure that they're aware of what programs are available, because it seems that it's easy to say, lower my taxes, but you've got to see how that can happen, and one of the ways is to take advantage of these programs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. LaLobbity.
First, I just wanted to say thank you to Cindy, because she's been very responsive throughout this process. As early, or as recently as this afternoon, I was emailing her with questions and got her response before the meeting, so thank you for that. My only question is, what would the application process be for seniors or anyone who does qualify for, or thinks that they might qualify for any of the exemptions?
Usually, they reach out with a phone call, and normally, my administrative assistant assessor would talk to them, Lisa. And we'd kind of give them some guidelines to see if they think they might qualify, and then we get them out an application. They would have to fill in the application. For a senior, the first year, they would have to supply us with a birth certificate because we need to, you know, verify the age. They would have to give us copies of, like, bank account statements and things for July 1st, which would be the date of qualification, and we would have to look at the assets and the income for that person to qualify for that exemption. And then if they qualify, they would receive the exemption on their January 1st bill.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody got anything else? Okay. Well, before we get started with people in the, in attendance tonight, I've received a couple here in support of the tax classification. We have one here that was, another one here from a resident and also a budget director for one of the businesses. And I think that one of the things that she said, because she has been in town for so long, she believed that lowering the tax rate for businesses will not only encourage more business to return, but also to keep local businesses in town. The future impact to residents will mean a larger business base to help with Auburn's tax burden. And small business owners face enough challenges today with the minimum wage increases. They don't have any kids in school, and they are on fixed incomes themselves, but healthcare, they had mentioned, was, has its own areas of demand, and unfortunately, the cost cannot be passed along to consumer. So businesses themselves have got their own expenses that they have to take a look at, and that was just some of the things that they had passed along. But we didn't receive the amount of support or against the tax classification process this year as we have in the past, so those are just a couple of the things that we had received. So I will turn it over to anybody in attendance tonight that would like to speak on behalf of the tax classification. Please. Would you just come up and identify yourself?
Good evening. Thank you all. Thank you, Cindy and Seth, for doing a wonderful job explaining the complicated very simply for us to understand. My name's Mattio Gentili. I live at 33 Silver Street in town. I've been here for 33 years. I think Auburn's a great town. I do raise my hand when people say, who likes to pay taxes? I raise my hand, because I like paying for what I receive. I love the town, I love our state, I love our country. So I recognize the need to do it, and I pay taxes, and I'm happy to do it. I only own residential property in town. I no longer own commercial property, so I just want to make that point clear. So Auburn's a great place to live, work, play, and do business. Thanks to your leadership, the property values have gone up in town, both residential and commercial. That's a wonderful thing. When values go up, people have more value and they're worth more to pass on to their children should they need to. We are seeking more business to come to town. There was a time when businesses were leaving town. There were a lot of empty buildings up and down Southbridge Street. That's changed, and I think in large part because of the trend to continue to aim towards a single tax rate. I'd love to see us keep doing that for our town, the betterment of our town. Businesses bring jobs when they come into a community. They bring jobs, they bring employees. Those employees, when they go out for lunch or on their way home, they stop and help other businesses in town and help the community. Our businesses continue to help the town. We do townwide cleanups. We do scholarships for the graduating seniors. We, small businesses, middle-sized, and large businesses always do donations and help and service to help with town projects. So with all the things that businesses do, I think that we really need to keep focused and keep the trend going in a right direction. I'd love to be at a single tax rate this evening. I know that's not politically correct, but if you could, please, let's see if we can maybe split the difference from 1.17 down to 1, and encourage more businesses to come in town. We've got a really good trend. The town's doing really well, so I wish everyone would vote to make a change in a real positive direction for our town. Thank you.
Eternus?
Sure.
I went home last year with a stiff neck, so this year, Lynn, it turns, so I can see you guys. First of all, that was a great presentation. Thank you very much for that. Thank you for allowing us this time to address the Board. My name's Steve Landrigan, the current president of the Auburn Chamber of Commerce and owner of Chuck Steakhouse, proudly one of the longest-standing businesses here in Auburn, nearly 42 years. What I've been most impressed with since joining the Chamber Board is the incredible generosity of our members. Just one example is last month where we raised almost 20, over $20,000 at our annual, at our annual golf tournament. All that money goes right back into the town in the form of mini-grants to our teachers and scholarships to our graduating seniors. What our mini-grants do is fund projects that teachers want to do with their students but the budgets don't allow for. Last year, we awarded 14 teachers a total of $3,072.16, and graduating seniors nearly $12,500 in scholarships, thanks to the generosity of our generous business owners in town. As businesses get cut, the first-place schools, fundraisers, sport groups go are to the small, small business owners for help. Some of us just can't say no. When you are a national chain or a large corporation, you can't put the blame on the corporate office. When you are the corporate office, it's hard to say no. These are the businesses that are, that for the most part, don't use the school system, don't use the police force, God forbid, don't use the fire department, yet are happy to pay for their fair share. Yes, we and our customers do use the infrastructure, and we love doing business here in Auburn. Yet in addition to our taxes, we all donate thousands and thousands of dollars to all customers. I know that Fuller's has donated $4,600 and $4,650, plus sponsored three Little League teams this year alone. In this past week, when the Auburn Police Department was looking to fund their Officer Phil program, on Friday, the Auburn businesses came up with $5,600 in about a day and a half, the Auburn business community, thanks to them. The list could go on and on and on. We all do it, happily do it, we love our town. Actually, there's a, there's a post on Facebook right now where a school group needs to fund a class trip. Who are they planning to ask? The residents or the business owners? I think you know the answer. As you know, they don't sell candy in front of stores anymore. Do you know why they don't sell candy in front of stores anymore? Because the customers/residents complained. And it's much easier for them to go to a business owner and ask for a donation than to sit in front of a store for three or four hours and ask for donations. That's why you don't see it. So, please look no further than the surrounding towns that we compete with for new, new small business, Oxford, Milbury, Shrewsbury, and their success. I'm a taxpayer in Oxford, my neighbors are taxpayers in Oxford, many who don't have children in the school system. Businesses are moving into town, home values are going up, and we're thrilled what's happening. On the other side of the coin, how about all that's going on in Worcester? With the Red Sox on the plus side, and their tax situation on the negative side. Auburn is the perfect answer for a small business to capitalize on the proximity of Polar Park. The lower tax, a lower tax rate, more businesses in town is only going to benefit everyone. More jobs, more commerce, business breeds business. We need to continue to narrow the gap. We talked about a 10-year plan toward a single tax rate. We have made significant movement towards that and brought in many new businesses to the town. We filled many of the vacant storefronts we had 10 years ago. We need to continue that push with all, like all of those other communities that I spoke, that I spoke of have already done. So, in conclusion, please, vote to continue to head in the right direction, sending the correct message to potential businesses in Auburn that Auburn is business-friendly, because in your heart of hearts, you know that this is what's best for the town and its future. Thank you for your time, and I'm confident that you'll do what's best for the town of Auburn.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Mr. Reisner?
My name is Marty Reisner. I'm here from the Auburn Industrial Development Corporation. We own and lease the buildings in the Auburn Industrial Park, and also on Milbury Street, right here in Auburn. And we also own land, and we've developed land and purchased properties over the last 55 years now. So, I can relate to, you know, the sentiment that Steve was talking about. And so, I'm here to, on behalf of our tenants, they rely on low operating expenses to thrive and profit, and we do our best to control our operating expenses, but we can't control the tax rate. So, I would, you know, agree with my fellow business owners and push towards the, the single tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm president of Aimtech and ATech Turbine. Both of our companies are located in Auburn, and here I come again to plead again to this, to use selectmen. You know, you know, I'm so glad that question was asked, and, you know, on your page 20. And a very nice demonstration of what a lower income tax can do for the businesses actually results in the lower assessment, and if you notice that higher tax rate, lower net operating income, and results in lower assessment, you know. That was a very pointed question that was asked, and I'll, I just want you to know, I mean, I'm glad that is answered, because in the past, you have been very stubborn about not lowering the tax rates, you know, but this is a very good question, you know, I'm glad. I just want to tell you the positive points, you know. I come here with a positive story. Our company has increased employment by about 25%. And just want to let you know, Aimtech, 40% of our business is export. 60% of our business is domestic, and only about 3% to 4% of our business is in Massachusetts. And that goes for ATech, too. And just on Mark Street, next to us, Consolidated Fabricator just closed down, and all the people left, you know. So, we hired some of those folks, too. But, but the question, but the pointed results I want to give you, the folks we employ are from locally, and we train them. And they in turn pay taxes, they in turn use local businesses, and everybody wins. And I will give you an example of one of our employee, Justin. Justin, you know, came, we employed him about a couple of years ago, you know, and the other day, he said, "You know, Mr. Kapoor, I bought a truck. You want to see my truck? You know, I bought a Ford truck." And I go outside, I said, "That's a very nice truck. Where did you get this truck?" He says, "Here in Auburn," you know, from the Auburn dealer. The point I'm trying to make here is, these folks, you take them out of, either they are on state programs or whatever it is, you give them a job, they pay taxes, they buy these trucks, they spend money. And that's, that's a beautiful story. And, you know, on 60 Minutes this Sunday, I looked at it, and I saw, you know, what happened to Detroit. You know, businesses flee and all that, and it's, it's like a ghost town, and, you know, what they are trying to get businesses back. So, all I ask is, you know, I was very happy that you folks were going in the split, from split tax rate to single tax rate, you were going down, and, you know, I was encouraged. I hope you send the right message, and, you know, and I'm just pleading to you folks to keep that trend going, and let's get to a single tax rate. And this will be good for Auburn, good for Worcester County, good for Massachusetts, and more businesses come in here, good for everybody, good for your tax base, you'll collect more, property values will go up, and everybody wins. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Yes, please.
My name is Alex Guardiola. I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Public Policy for the Worcester Chamber of Commerce, and I am here on behalf of our affiliate partner, the Auburn Chamber. I want to thank you all for your time this evening, and thank you, as I know this is an arduous process, and I want to commend you for your due diligence. I'm here to discuss the town's annual tax classification. The chamber contends that reducing the gap between the commercial tax rate and the residential tax rate will lead to a fair and equitable tax system in Auburn. Moreover, it will continue to grow the commercial workforce and tax base. As we heard from our businesses today, they are not just an operation that opens at X time and closes at Y, they are a fabric of this community. They sponsor Little League teams, they donate to fire, police initiatives and events, they provide good-paying jobs for residents, they've donated $305,000 to, mini-grants to schools and scholarships to graduating students. I understand the argument that some residents don't utilize some of the public amenities, such as public schools, but on the same note, neither do the businesses, but it doesn't deter them from contributing when asked for either a donation or a sponsorship. The business community understands that having a strong, vibrant public school system, police, fire, town administration, only benefits both businesses and residents alike. In order to retain the businesses that are here, and to promote and recruit new businesses to come in, there has to be a fair and balanced tax rate. When choosing locations, businesses take a lot into account, especially when setting roots somewhere. One of them is the tax rate. When surrounding towns have half the rate in tax rate, in tax for commercial residents or commercial businesses, those are real dollars. Those are dollars that could hire more workforce, they could, you know, build a bigger building. They're real dollars that have to be taken into account. Auburn is centrally located, they have access to all the main arteries, and we should hone that here and promote businesses to stay here and come here, rather than kind of deter them from leaving because of this tax gap. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak on tax classification tonight?
Hi. My name is Matthew Taylor. I'm a very recent resident in this town, just moved in about a year and a half ago, currently live on 33 Burnap Street. I'd just like to say that, listening to the testimony that I've heard, I agree, it is important to make Auburn an attractive place to do business and an attractive place to live. This split is something that, if we reduce it too quickly, it's going to put a sudden shock on the residents. I agree that we need to move towards a unified rate, we need to make ourselves in line with most of the other communities nearby, but I would just ask that, as you make this move, you consider the economic situation of the residents here, you consider the rate at which you move, and you move judiciously. That's all I have to ask, is just consider all sides. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? I'll turn it back over to the board. Has the board got any comments, questions? First, we'll, Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, lots of notes here. Sometimes I get frustrated, I'm not stubborn. I know I am the longest-serving member on this board since, this current board, but I do take a thoughtful and careful approach to this hearing annually. When I ask a question, anyone who knows me, or most people who know me, 99% of my questions, I already know the answer to, I just want to get it on the record. It's important that people understand this. So, I appreciate your comments, but I, I wanted to expound on the information so that people listening had that information. We talk a lot about the 10-year savings to the taxpayers of $34 million, especially at town meeting, when we're talking to our residents. But this board, including me, has worked very hard with the town manager, giving the town manager, the CFO, direction when it comes to budgets, preparing budgets, that we not go to the two and a half. And this is the first year that we actually see a number attached to that, a value of $3,500 for the commercial, average commercial bill. So, I want, you know, I want you to also appreciate the work that we do annually to help you as well, and that also isn't just the residents that we're not going to the two and a half, it's the commercial rate that isn't going to two and a half. I don't know of a lot of communities out there that are not taxing to the two and a half right now. You know, I say this annually, there is a benefit to citing your business in Auburn. We have the finest public safety, if you have a fire, if you need police, who do monitor your businesses in the evening. I look at the police log, and they're driving through the businesses, checking them, they're right there. If you have employees that may need to go to a medical clinic after work, we've got ReadyMed right here. If they need to show up, need to get prescriptions, we have all kinds of amenities, thanks to the businesses that are here, but that also benefits the businesses. Our infrastructure, we've put millions of dollars into our infrastructure with a long-term road project. Your employees who drive these brand-new trucks must also appreciate the fact that they're driving to work on these new roads, that, I have to say, I follow other communities, I've been doing this now for 11 years, they're struggling for their road maintenance programs. So, we do have a lot to offer. I have sat here year after year and have, have worked towards this. Some years, we can move it, some years, it stays the same, but we haven't, in the 11 years that I've been here, although there has been some interest in doing it, gone the other direction. So, we, here we sit, a year later, we've only heard from you at this hearing, I appreciate everything, I'm talking about the general comments, I know Matty O. and Steve, we see you at all of the events. My point is, we hear about the tax classification each year, and you come at the board, but we have done a lot, we continue to do a lot, and sometimes I'd like that acknowledged instead of standing up and saying, "I'm stubborn." Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich. Mr. Berthew?
So, I've prepared some notes that I want to read. All my life, I have lived in Auburn and have been lucky to have had local businesses sponsor and support local town sports, local town events, school sports, school plays, school trips, Brownies, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, as well as many other groups, organizations, town functions, and fundraisers for Auburn's many resident needs. When somebody goes in to ask for their help, I don't think any of our business owners are saying, "No, we can't, because we pay too much in taxes." I'm sure there have been some lean years for them, but again, in my lifetime, I can't remember a group saying that they can't have a team, or they can't do a class trip, or a class function because they weren't able to raise enough funds. That is a tribute to the giving nature of a lot of residents here in Auburn, and it is also a tribute to the giving nature of our business community here in Auburn. As a small business owner of a computer sales and consulting firm in the 80s and 90s here in Auburn, I got to see firsthand how expensive it was to not just support and ensure my business, but also just how expensive it was to have employees. It is 10 times more expensive today with auto, health, and liability insurances, with employer taxes, with rents and property taxes, as well as costs of technology and supplies. Many small business owners, even when they are struggling, are pushing through to find new ways to better their profits, lower their costs, stay up with technology while maintaining their workforce, and still supporting their community. They are paying their higher rate to operate a business in Auburn, even though a fair amount of those taxes are for debt exclusions and school budgets, which some owners do not and will not utilize. I realize that there are benefits to being in Auburn, no one has ever denied that. Auburn is a centrally-located, small-town feel with big-town, you might even say, big-city happenings. We are very fortunate to have the best of fire services and police services anywhere. We are fortunate to have a great management team that has found ways to maximize dollars and utilize cross-department assets for our town's public services like land, road, health, senior, and recreation needs. A lot of this comes with the support of our business community. To name a few of our businesses, to name a few, our businesses have helped to support thousands of dollars per year in scholarships and grants to our schools, dollars and hours of labor to our townwide cleanup days, dollars and help for our annual 4th of July celebration, dollars and participation in Auburn Youth and Family Services fundraisers... dollars and participation in Auburn Youth and Family Services fundraisers, like Dancing with the Stars, dollars and gifts for programs like Secret Santa and Fuel Fund. The list doesn't seem to stop, and neither does the giving from our business partners. I would like to read an email from a small business that I received just today. I have edited out the names, because I think it speaks volumes for a lot of the businesses that we have in town. It goes, "Dear Mr. Selectman, I am unable to attend the meeting tonight. My company has been serving the community in Auburn since 1998. Currently, we pay $56,000 a year in property taxes, and we are proud to be in Auburn, Mass. We attract many different people throughout New England to the town of Auburn to purchase our merchandise. With the surge in online shopping, it is more difficult to remain competitive today than ever before in a brick-and-mortar physical retail store. It is critical for customers to physically come into our building to purchase merchandise, so that we can continue to offer employment to 40-plus employees. Even with the rising cost of healthcare, we still pay more than the state minimum for our employees. In the past, we have contributed to the Auburn Police Department's Secret Santa program, and we are proud of our close relationship with the Auburn PD and Auburn Fire Department. We want to continue to support our local community as much as possible. Having said this, I am requesting that you vote to continue to narrow the property tax gap with respect to residential and commercial properties. Additionally, it will show that Auburn is indeed not only business-friendly, but the town is proactive and taking financial measures to attract new businesses to the town." I think that was a well-written and to-the-point email. I understand that our property values have increased this year, which can be a double-edged sword. As you saw, for example, the town of Shoesbury shows their residents a lower rate, tax rate, but then has much higher values for compatible homes to Auburn, resulting in a net result of equal taxes to ours. In my opinion, they are not a more desirable location than Auburn. I don't feel they have better services than Auburn. Bottom line is, a town has to pay for all of that it provides for its residents and businesses. Our businesses, who are working just as hard as our residents to stay up with all these increases, are trying to work with our system to be sure everyone has what they need. What they are looking for is continued help and collaboration with the residents, so that they too can afford to stay in Auburn and be part of this great community. In looking at the chart of comparisons of value shifts, I am seeing that a movement, even to 1.14, would result in the average household with a value of $280,000 would only be impacted a little more than a dollar per week. I don't feel that it would be, that that would be too much to ask, and I'm guessing that a lot of the help that this movement would give to our business community will probably continue to come back to us twofold. I am therefore requesting, and will make a motion at the appropriate time, to make a shift to 1.14. Thank you for your time and consideration, and thank you to the business community of
Thank you, Mr. Berthew. Mr. Coppender.
Thank you, it's very interesting, thank you all for coming. Some of you have become familiar faces in the short time I've served on the board. I do want to point out that I don't know where this 10-year plan came in, because nobody ever asked me when I was elected if I was on a 10-year plan. So, that would be point one. Point two would be, if you go to page 29, you would realize that from 2006 to 2019, we've gone from a factor of 162 to 117. So, if that's stubbornness, I'd hate to see what really stubborn is. I think we can, we can all talk to our own issues. Certainly, I don't support going back this year. I think we went back three last year. I think this is a year to not go back. And every year that we go back is yet another increase for the residents. And the dirty little secret is, we got a petition, and the residents didn't even get invited to come to a meeting. But yet, you sit here. So, you know, I don't want to work through a list. When residents ask me to come before a board that is not overburdened with business, on a bi-weekly basis, and gets no response from this board, I guess I have to say that that's not acceptable, to me. So, the residents don't come out every year, we have one or two here tonight. I'm not going to support going back, because while all of your expenses have gone up, so hasn't all of the people who are at home, who are not taking advantage of those programs, whether they can or they can't. Because if you think $40,000 a year for a couple of two is living large, in the state of Massachusetts, where we have a governor talking about a housing crisis, and the, most people can't even afford to buy a home in Auburn anymore, because it's too expensive. And we can talk about taxes, but we just went up on, we just went up on trash, we go up on sewer, we're going to be going up on water, that's private, but it's going up. And every year, people who are on Medicare get an increase. They do not get a cost of living increase every year, but they certainly get an increase of their expenses. Imagine making $1,200 a year and having to pay $300 out of that every month, for your healthcare. That's not deductibles, that's nothing. That's simply, I have a plan. So, to those people, and to the 30% or more who are on the free lunch program, so it's not just the seniors that are suffering, it's the families too. They're struggling. There are a lot of people, I don't know where they live, and it's not very obvious in Auburn that there are people struggling, but there are. And when you look at a high rate of a free lunch program in the town of Auburn, with all of the material wealth that we seem to exhibit, that's troubling to me. So, no, I'm not going to go back this year, I will happily look at it next year, but this is not a year for me to support, going back to 114, or 115, or 116. I think we've done a hell of a good job in the short time I've been on the board, and I think we've been fair to the business community, and I think our residents are asking us to take a pause.
Thank you, Mr. Coppender. Mr. Laloubi.
First, I just want to echo everything that Mrs. Goodrich said, I don't think I could have put anything better, myself, and I just would not have been able to do that. And I agreed with everything she said. I've supported moving the rate in the past, and continue to do so, because I believe it economically, in the long run, benefits the town of Auburn, but we have to be cognizant of how it affects our residents. The residents aren't able to raise the cost of their services, they don't have services to offer, they are, many of them on fixed incomes, that aren't going up. And I want to thank Mr. Taylor for being one of the only residents to come in and actually speak to the residents' concerns. He's only been here for a short time in town, but came out to talk tonight, so I do appreciate that.
Anybody have anything else? Mr. Jacobson?
Yeah, Lionel.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Berthew.
You know, I don't, I don't think anybody was stopped from coming out and speaking tonight. I appreciate Mr. Taylor also for coming out, and for recognizing that, you know, going in the right direction is going to be good for the town. And I do appreciate the fact that, that he asked for us not to go, you know, crazy with it, and, because, you know, it would be easy to just, you know, rip the Band-Aid and go to a single rate, and, but, we all know that that is painful, for the first little bit, but it's good that he did come as a resident, it's good that he did recognize that it's okay to continue to move in the right direction. And again, based on the 1.14, that I would like to make a motion to vote on, you know, a little more than a dollar a week, I don't think is outrageous, and it gets things going in the right direction. No matter what year, you know, whether it's, you know, the revaluation, and so therefore there's more taxes, every year, nobody wants to pay taxes, so there's always going to be a reason that, you know, this year isn't a good year. And that's why I think it's, it's been a good plan to, and I don't know anything about a 10-year plan either, but maybe that was the initial concept of the, reducing the rate, or getting to the single tax rate. But, I, you know, to me, it's just like, just keep making progress, that's what I'm trying to do. I see that, you know, it's very little money to keep making progress. I certainly appreciate, you know, everything that my fellow board members have said about elderly, about, you know, lower income. And, and again, there's help out there, there's, the businesses help, and that's what I'm looking to do. Let's support our businesses, they turn around and support us twofold. And that was my point, is that, you know, I just sat down and I talked with one of our firefighters, and they're putting a program together as, kind of like, an emergency relief fund, and, you know, the first thing that I knew, businesses were saying, "Well, as soon as you get a, an account set up, we'll be, we'll be ready to fund that, so that the firefighters can, can have some emergency relief." But, you know, if they go into, say, a, an elderly home, you know, our firefighters have taken money out of their own pockets to, to put fuel in tanks when they go to a resident. They've taken money out of their pockets to go buy some groceries to residents that they, they see, you know, having, struggling a particular month, and need to go get food. These are things that, a lot of things happen behind the scenes, a lot of things with businesses happen behind the scenes. A lot of residents are there to help. Sometimes, you have to go to the right places for help. And so therefore, I don't think that we, and I don't want to use the word punished, because we're not punishing, we're all working together, but I don't think that we should stop the progress that's being made, especially with, you know, trying to get more businesses in town, where we're constantly trying to fill vacant buildings. And, you know, if we can show that we're moving in the right direction, it just makes that process that much easier. And, you know, if we had a business community that didn't give back, then I might be singing a different song right now. But we have a business community that constantly gives, and I just think that we should continue in the right direction to, to help those businesses out, and move, you know, get closer to a single rate, even if it's $1 a month at a time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berthew. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple more points to the 10-year plan. It's certainly not anything that this board, since I've been on, ever adopted. I think it's wishful thinking, from the business community, that this happens in 10 years. But just so you know, Mr. Coppender, nobody tied anyone's hands, we don't have the ability to do that. I think it was just wishful thinking for a 10-year plan. Just a couple more final points. We just closed out town meeting, and again, closed out at what, 1.17? 1.17 of the tax levy. So, although it doesn't appear that, you know, we've done anything for the business community, again, when we don't go to that two and a half, and we only use 1.17, that's a significant savings for you. This board, along with the school committee and the finance committee, has worked for years with the town manager to adopt strong financial policies. We are, we are working at that. That's, it's not just about the split rate, it's about what we're doing overall, that I look at, the long-term planning, the CIP. We, we work at this every meeting we're here, every, every meeting I have with the town manager and the CFO. This is much more than just our tax classification hearing, and I just, I want the business community to not only see that, but appreciate it. I mean, again, if we had gone to the two and a half this year, your tax bills would have gone up significantly. I appreciate Mr. Berthew's comments. I am not prepared this year to go to the 1.14. I think it's important that we, we do something. We, you know, we, one year we stayed level for three years, another year we stayed level for two years. I think, I think it's important that we also acknowledge the work the town manager does in moving this, so I would be willing to go to the 1.16, but certainly not a 1.14.
Figure anything else? Mr. Jacobson?
Thank you, I just want to add, and I want to thank the members of the board for acknowledging the work that town administration has done, along with the town meeting members, to keep the, to keep our budgets in reasonable, and to continue to tax, and continue to grow our excess levy, and balance our reserves, and increase those reserves substantially, as you can see from the chart that Mrs. Cosgrove included, that includes every town meeting. We have not used the excess levy, we're approaching $6 million. Most communities are taxing at two and a half, and we pledge that we will continue, regardless of the vote that you take this evening, our goal is always to make sure that we keep that tax rate low in future years, as much as we can, excuse me, to keep the budget low, the tax rate is obviously set based on the differential. And also want to thank the business community, because I think town administration's developed a really good relationship with the business community, and a couple of you mentioned it, and we're proud of it. We've seen substantial growth in the commercial-industrial sector in the last few years, and I do think much of it is attributed to the work that this board has done. And you've acknowledged that economic development is important, you've allowed town administration to focus on economic development, we actually have an economic development coordinator that we've had for the last couple of years, so I want to thank the board, because you've given us the tools that we need to encourage economic development, stimulate growth in the economy, and, as we all know, as we grow that pie, the residential share will be less of it. If that pie shrinks, everybody will gain. So, I want to thank both the board for your continued support in our economic development initiatives, and the business community for the partnership that you've had with town administration.
Thank you. Ms. Kesseloff attending here.
No, I just want to, I think, echo what town manager said tonight. This is a long-term plan, I think we pitched that going back to 2012, it was actually 2013. So, we're six or seven years into the, to the sound of financial policies, which has honestly paid dividends to not only the community, but the businesses and the residents as well. I think back about six months ago, we brought a profile in on other central mass communities, and what their excess levy levels were. No one even comes close to us. We're approaching $6 million. I think Shoesbury was like 1.5 million. Even with a low tax rate, they're still taxing the majority of two and a half every year. There are communities out here that have no excess levy. One thing I want to emphasize is, excess levy really translates to savings to everyone across the board. We're not taxing to two and a half. I want you to focus on that slide that Cindy presented tonight, you're going to see the level of taxation over the past 10 years. Not one year comes close to two and a half. I think there was one year of 1.8-something. This year, a 1.17. And it's our goal every year to try to minimize the level of taxation, not only to the residents, but to all taxpayers across the spectrum. So, we continue to do our, our hard work here, and we're looking for times of economic opportunity to continue to compress the tax rate, whether it's 10 years, whether it's 20 years. I think we demonstrated that we've done that, and we're going to try to continue to do that in the future.
Thank you. Anything else? Well, I guess I would add my little portion tonight, too, that I am also a resident. Nobody likes to pay taxes, but we have services, we have probably the best services there are in Southern West County. And both residents and the business have supported it over the years. over the years. And I think that some of the, the word I hear out is that not only is it taxes you have to pay, but you've also got your other expenses, as I noted tonight here, is, you know, healthcare costs. That's something you have to absorb. It's nothing we can help you with. It's just something we can help you with on the outside. And I think in order to provide long-term goals and progress in this town, I think we have to continue to help out the businesses. And Mr. Berthew is very passionate, has been, ever since he's been on the board, and I have, see that he is, has the businesses in sight and wants to help out as best we can. I think that he's done a great job in it. But I would agree with my other members that 1.14 is a little bit more of a step than I'm ready to go for. The 1.16, I'm happy to be with. And there's always that case of unanticipated expenses that we have over the course of the years, especially in this day and age where government is changing all the time. So we want to be sure that we take care of ourselves, as well as we take care of you. So I think it's kind of a split thing, and the 1.16 would be something I would be supportive of. And I thank you, Mr. Berthew, for your compassion. Has anybody got anything else?
Yes, Mr. Berthew.
I would just do one more appeal. I'm looking at the numbers, and I would certainly be happy to get some support. The 1.16, looks like it's a cost of about $22.25 for the year per resident. If we went to the 1.15, it would only be $41.72, you know, looking at $19. And I would just throw out one last appeal to see if you folks would be willing to maybe go to the 1.15.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carpenter.
And just as a note, point out that that's not per resident. That's per resident at a pinned amount. So that isn't per resident.
$280,000 value. That's correct.
Let me tell you a story. When I first was running, a gentleman pulled in to Verizon, and he was paying, at that time, $10,000 as a resident for taxes. So there's a lot of people who are paying an awful lot more, and at $280,000, I just don't see it. I don't see the logic. But I agree with the chairman. I always appreciate your point of view, Mr. Berthew, but I can't follow you down that road.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Has anybody got anything else? Anybody else? Yes, please.
Again, Matthew Gentile. I was here at the first hearing, and I had the demonstration with pictures of the holes in Auburn. I don't believe it was at that meeting, but it was one or two meetings after that, that there was a discussion of the 10-year plan. There was no written agreement, but the words were, from the board, hey, maybe we can get this done in 10 years. That's to clarify that. I didn't say, you saw it, you saw it. And as far as stubbornness and appreciative, I, in the business community, appreciate all you do. And yes, there are times that stubborn is the right word. During the presentation today, there was one clear, closed arms, closed body language, I'm not voting for this, no matter what you say. Dan, that was you. You had your mind made up before we even came. And I think that's not fair to the business community. You should have taken the time and energy to listen. You should have been more respectful. You shoot numbers about residents and paying, but you have no hard facts. You said, I don't know who these people are, but I know that they're going to pay. So I'd appreciate a little more courtesy for the process, and for the people who work hard to make it happen. I think the people who voted you in, I know you have compassion for people, but you really ought to show a little more concern and intelligence in research for our community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Has anybody got anything else?
Once again, Matthew Taylor, 33 Burnap. I'd just like to say that our board has math on their side. I'm a taxpayer with a house at above median. That means for me, there's someone below median. So just because they're not visible, doesn't mean they're not there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to, I spoke from the heart, and I didn't mean, the way you folks have taken it, you know, stubborn, the word stubborn, you know? Maybe it was not the right way to say it. But, you know, I feel, basically, you know, that I've been coming here, and the record will show, you know, like 2014, 1.22. 2015, 1.22. 2016, 1.22. 2017, pleading, 1.20. 2018, 1.20. And then you go to 2019. What does this message tell me? Basically, I spoke the way I see it. And I don't want you folks, it's the record you folks have. You know what I mean? So I just wanted you folks to know that everybody wins when the tax rate is lowered to the businesses. I didn't want to, I just wanted to convey that message. And I was very adamant in saying how our business is. We derive only 3% from state of Massachusetts, and 0% of our revenue comes from Auburn. That is not the point. I never said anything negative about the police force, about the fire department, about the people that run. You have a very high rating on your bonds, Auburn has, speaks very well for Auburn. That was not the point. The point, you're missing the point. The point I'm trying to say is that if you lower the taxes of the business, more businesses come in, everybody flourishes. And I pointed out on the 60 Minutes, the, what happened to Detroit, you know, when businesses flee. And that's all I was trying to make, the point. And I just hope you take it in the right manner, you know? That's all I have to say, you know? And once again, I hope you lower the tax split down to what is suggested, rather than just go tepid decrease, you know, that type of thing. But that's my opinion. I will stick to my opinion, you know, and I will present it.
Thank you very much.
Think about democracy, you know? You have to say it.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. We have the votes that take in front of us tonight. The first is going to be the selection of the residential factor. Excuse me.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we go to a residential factor of 1.16.
Motion been made to go to a residential factor of 1.16. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you. On the open space discount, is there a motion?
Make a motion that we do not offer this discount, as is our custom.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there anything discussed, comments? Being none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you. Excuse me. On the residential exemption.
Make a motion that we do not adopt this, as is our custom.
Second.
Is there any comments, questions? Being none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? And the last, for the small commercial exemption, is there a motion?
Make a motion that we adopt that exemption, as is our custom.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Mrs. Goodrich?
Just under discussion, do we have to add a value to that? The 10%?
Yes.
We have to, just so the motion includes...
So I will include in the motion 10%.
Okay. I didn't know if you had done that or not. I was going to go back and ask for that.
Okay.
Thank you. So the motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you. Okay. We move on in our meeting tonight. And we'll just take a couple of moments to let people clear. The Roman.
Are you going to...
Okay. Okay. Moving on with our agenda for tonight, I'm going to ask again, is there anybody from Action Book Distributors here with us tonight?
Motion to continue to the next meeting.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, table to the next meeting. All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Comment on that before the vote?
Yeah, I didn't know if you...
He was the one that came and presented to us before, right?
He came at our last meeting.
And didn't we say that we would kind of do a little bit of research, and then see him back at this meeting?
Well, what had happened was we, they were, from what my understanding is, they were to approach the planning board tonight for their review and for their vote. And evidently, they didn't approach the planning board tonight, and nobody is here from their office. So we are going to table that till our next meeting, and hopefully, we can contact them and find out exactly what we're doing. So we're not putting it off, and we're just going to table it for our next meeting, and then we can contact them and see what the next step is.
I just didn't know if the no-show was just that they had given up on it.
No, it's, we don't know exactly what it is. So that's what we're going to do, is we'll table it till our next meeting, and then we'll ask the administration to take a look at it and find out where we stand with it.
Through the chair.
Yes, please.
Maybe I can clarify. We received a call, actually, our office did not receive a call. Our town planner received a call this afternoon from the applicant asking to withdraw the application to the planning board for the special apartment that's required to have a different use in the facility. So they withdrew their application from the planning board. They did not contact our office or your office to notify us if they wanted to be, have this application withdrawn as well. So we thought, rather than assuming they want it withdrawn, we should just leave it and table it to the next meeting, giving us the opportunity. That call came in around 10 minutes before this afternoon. So we don't really have any other information from them as to why they were withdrawing from the planning board. But clearly, without the planning board, they can't go forward with their project anyway.
Okay. Either way, I guess.
So the motion's been made and seconded. I'll ask for the vote again. All those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. Okay. Under item 5E, discussion of potential vote on December meeting schedule. We have this come up every year, that towards the end of the year, it gets to be very quiet, and the holidays, everybody's busy, so, excuse me, what's the pleasure of the board? Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I did look at the calendar, and it appears that we're the 9th, the 23rd, and the 30th. I know that all of our license applications are due by the end of the year, the license renewals. So just for discussion purposes, I would propose that we not hold the meeting on the 23rd, being so close to the holiday and actually being part of the Hanukkah holiday. So that is what I would propose, the 9th and the 30th. I don't, it's up to other members. That would give us an opportunity to address all end-of-year license renewals.
Ms. Jacobson, I guess I'll ask, where do we stand with licenses, renewals, and will the 9th be suitable, or will we have to have a meeting on the 30th?
Through the chair, we won't know until we get closer to that date. But generally, what the board has done is, if we don't have renewal responses from applicants, the board has taken a vote that, conditional upon additional applicants wanting to renew, the board will vote to renew it. So that schedule should work out fine, even if we didn't have everything all set. As Mrs. Goodrich said, that would give us the 30th, if there were any stragglers or anything that came in. But generally, the board takes a conditional vote earlier in the month, anyway.
Okay. Do you foresee anything else coming for the 1st of December that we're going to have to be...
You know, at this moment, I can't say that. We always have grants, but this board has been supportive of us. If we do find out about a grant, and it's in between your meetings, we have been applying for the grant and then coming to you and begging for forgiveness that we applied for the grant, but actually asking for approval to accept the funds if we were to get the grant. So it won't hold us up for any grants, other than standard business that takes place at the end of the year. That schedule should work out.
Okay. So we have a meeting on December 9th, and as always, if something critical comes up that we need to be meeting, we can make notice and notify everybody of what's going on. So we need a motion on the December schedule.
I guess, for point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, that's our regular meeting. Can't we carry this over if we have a need to meet? We can perhaps see where we are on licenses on the 9th. Hopefully, we're in a good place.
That's fine. We can do that. So we'll, on our regular meeting night on the December 9th, and then we can go from there. We can decide on what we're going to do for the rest of the month. Great. Thank you.
But I would, Mr. Chairman, if I can just continue, I don't think that we, even looking at this calendar, we don't need to have three meetings. And being right in the middle of the holiday week, I would make a motion that we not have a meeting on December 23rd.
Second. Any comments, questions? Mr. Lilibity?
I just want to make the comment that, as of right now, December 9th is iffy for me, so I may not be able to make it. I just wanted to let the board know. But other than that, I'm just one member down, so.
Okay. So no meeting on the 23rd, it's been motion seconded. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item 6B, fiscal year 2021 budget priorities. And I'll turn it over to...
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll run with this one. So we're prepared to kick off the budget at a finance committee meeting scheduled for next Wednesday on the 20th. And we typically ask the board if they have any priorities in preparation of getting the message out early on, so we're not dealing with any outstanding issues that may arise once the budgets are prepared. It's nice to get the message to the department heads in advance, so they know what parameters they have to work with. Certainly, like any year, we have the typical fixed costs that we have to consider, that being our debt obligations, contractual wages for all the successful negotiations we being our debt obligations, contractual wages for all the successful negotiations we had. 10 out of 12, we still have two that are open, that are creating some uncertainty right now. Our employee benefits, and some mandates that we have addressed through the budget process last year. We actually did an outside Warren article to address some of the structural mandates under stormwater management that will help us initiate that process. But certainly, there are ongoing operational expenses that we have to consider as well. So just wanna let the board know, that is on the radar screen, as something that we may have to act on in the upcoming budget. But certainly, outside of that, out of the typical items that we need to address, I don't know if there are any items that the board wants town administration to take a look at, in addition to the normal ones that we typically have to work into the budget.
Well, Mr. Carpenter.
I just have a question, not necessarily about 2021 priorities, but I know we have some outstanding positions, like the civil engineer position for stormwater, there's some fire and police positions. Where are we with the hiring process on that? Those positions.
So those positions are already built into the budget, except for the SAFER grant, we have to match, I think in year one, 25% or 35%? So that is an additional cost that we had recognized in advance. The civil engineers position we put out there, we didn't get any applications. So that's telling us that, what's telling, I think we are all reading it the same way, that the level of compensation for that position is not competitive enough to attract any qualified candidates. We put it back out for a higher rate, I think it's out there now, so I don't know where we stand with that. And, Mr. Carpenter, what was the other...
Police positions?
They're interviewing several candidates that are on the civil service list, scheduled, I believe, to go into the academy in January or February. There'll be a six-month process. Those are already built into the budget, but certainly, there's a delay in hiring because of the red tape that they need to go through in order to hire those individuals.
Thank you.
I think one of the things that I have, as we spoke of when we were talking about tax classifications, unanticipated expenses. I don't know if there are any coming, if you see any on the horizon, but I think with that in mind, if there's anything coming forward, that we should take those wish lists and cut them back, and stop our spending. I think we have, you know, the town is moving forward, we've done very, very well, and it's all up because of you, Julie, and the team, and you've done a great job. But I think right now, at this point, if there are any unanticipated expenses that we should watch real close and curb our spending. And the wish lists, yep, if there's a need, it's a priority, put them in order, but anything that looks like an extra that we really don't need right now, put it on the back burner. That would be my feeling. Mr. LaLiberty.
I agree with the chairman, and I would just say to keep it, I know you're going to anyway, but as close to, or as under 2.5% as possible, under 1% would be ideal. I know, as we've done in the past, but yeah, just everything the chairman said, I would just echo that.
So I do wanna acknowledge, I think one of the budget drivers that we try to address in the last couple of years, and thanks to a few members sitting here tonight, is the specialized expense. And certainly, we set up a stabilization account to hopefully deal with any unanticipated costs that may result of something that may pop after the budget is already set. Fortunately, we didn't have to dip into that in FY19. There was a hint that maybe they would have to go into that fund in FY20, but I think they were somehow able to manage those costs up until now without making that request before you. I believe they continue to feed that account by $30,000, so we're building up that account to a maximum 2% of net school spending, which puts it at about, a little over $500,000. I think we're at about 350. So I think we were able to address a good chunk of that, and hopefully, we continue to do that and contain specialty costs as best we can.
Okay. I guess, just in, just to reiterate, kind of curbing expense on our side, but we've got to approach the schools and say, you know what? It's time to step back and take a good look at what you really, really do need, and curb it for a while. The schools, I know the, and when I was in the school committee, it was, kids get one shot at education, and I believe that firmly, but I think we have a great system, I think we have a great program, and we have a great superintendent and team, and I think they can do very, very well, and I think if they could sharpen their pencil a little bit, if we sharpen our pencil, we could request it. They sharpen theirs, too, at the same time. Mr. Carpenter.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just one more question, and it's not necessarily a priority, but to your point of unanticipated, how many contracts are still out, and are the schools out as well?
Through the chair, we have, on the town side, we have 10 contracts. We've settled eight. Prior years, there were 11. Two of those collective bargaining units merged into one, so that's why there's 10. One is currently in mediation. The second one is heading toward mediation, which will be filed this week. So two would be in mediation. So those are unanticipated costs. We do not know where those two contracts will land. As far as the schools, their contracts are staggered. Right now, they are getting ready to negotiate. They have a couple of contracts that expire next June 30th. Their larger union, which is the teachers' union, does not expire this year. That doesn't expire for another two years. But there are some smaller bargaining units. So we have met with the school superintendent to discuss what our priorities are as a town, that we're hoping the school department will take under advisement, as well when they sit at the negotiating table.
And I guess, just to go along with that, not, because they negotiate their contracts, some of those expenses do get pushed over to us for health costs and what have you, and we pay for all that on our side. So, yeah, it's time that we all take a good look at it, and just kind of, and maybe that'll help with the taxes down the road, too. Just kind of, let's just rein it in for now, see where we are. And one year, one year you blink and it's gone, so I don't think it's gonna affect us, it's gonna hurt us, but I think it's something we should be taking a good look at. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So basically, my thoughts have been addressed, you know, the unanticipated or unknown expenses. You know, I know, since I've been here, you've taken on a lot of the work that was previously done by council, and I certainly appreciate that. But I think that, what I would like to see is that line item increased for legal services. Not that you're not capable, but I think that you guys need to sometimes let go of some of this stuff. You work too hard at it, you're, there could be other legal expenses that can't be discussed publicly, but I don't want the CFO and the town manager taking all of this on, feeling that the Board of Selectmen has come to expect you to provide these services when they were previously done by other, you know, town council or labor council. So I guess, my guidance is to take, you know, don't go crazy with the legal expenses, but don't feel, I can speak for myself, that you need to take all of this on. I think that everything that you do, both of you, you need to maybe just increase that line item, so that you can take some of that off your plate.
Thank you.
I would echo that myself, and also, you know, that OPEP has been, you know, it's an ongoing thing. I would not neglect that at all. I would say, stay with that and continue, you know, as we have with our policies, the financial policies, to go forward with that. So we do have some required expenses, but let's stay with those, be sure that we meet our requirements.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on the OPEP. So with the majority of the contracts that we've settled, we did negotiate into the contracts, there's a variety of menus, so to speak, for OPEP, but basically, all new employees coming in would pay 2%, and then a range of between 1% and 2% for existing employees for up to a certain period of time. So we are working really hard on that. That was an enormous priority that we had identified with the unions this year, and that should help us with our long-term liabilities and addressing it. We will continue to budget the $500,000, and as you've seen, add any additional in with free cash at the fall town meeting if we can. That liability is not going away. It's become even more challenging. I was at a meeting in Boston today, and there's yet another subcommittee being put together statewide to address the OPEP crisis, so to speak, and we'll continue to do that locally here as well. But we wanna thank our collective bargaining units for acknowledging and recognizing that that's an enormous liability and enormous expense to the town. We absolutely have to continue to address it.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Moving on, we've got no tabled items. Under the Selectment items, HATEA, discussion of potential vote to form a subcommittee to investigate ways to increase awareness and participation in local elections. And Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have much to add from September. I think this is needed. I think it's something that the board could quarterback, not necessarily, I don't see us as the decider or the person who's gonna come up with all the answers. I think we need to outreach to non-traditional sources. I was listening recently to former President Obama, and he said, "One of the biggest issues that faces our country today is complacency." And I think we have a great town clerk, and we have a great board of registrars who are doing everything they can, and I know that our social media team does everything, but the reality is, it's not enough. So let's see what there is. Maybe there is nothing more we can do. Maybe this is the new normal. I hope not, but I would just like to get an opportunity to take a swing at it anyways. So that's all I'm gonna say.
Well, Mr. Carpenter, my thought process on that, it's not the new normal. It's historically, the recent past, the Senate rates of voters has been being reduced, unless there is a significant cost to a project, if there's a, you know, a hotly contested race because of some project, some sort of monetary value, or even with the presidential elections. It seems as though everything has gone way down, and complacency, yeah, that could be it, but there's a lot of people out there that are apathetic, and I think that's what we're beginning to see. And I can't tell you enough that some people, when I first ran for office in this town nine years ago, I did my door-to-door, and I went up to a house, and the woman was carrying her baby. And I said, "My name's Ken Holstrom, I'm running for Board of Selectmen." Her question to me was, "Where?" And then, we had a gentleman in the house right next door. I asked, I says, "My name's Ken Holstrom." I says, "I don't care." I says, "Well, I'm running for selectman, I don't care." So there are that type of people around, you're not gonna get away from it. And I don't know if there's anything this board would even attempt to do, to try to change that. We make our votes known here, we have an open public meeting, we put out the information, we can't stress enough that, you know what, you gotta get out and let people know what you think. It's like leading that horse to the water. Yeah, it's not gonna happen. And as far as a subcommittee on this, I don't think anybody else can do anything. You've made a note that our town clerk, our town administration, social media, what else can you do but just go to their house and say, "You're coming with me," and that's not gonna happen. So that's my thought, and a subcommittee, I don't think is going to be of any help to us. Thank you. Is anybody, Mr. LaLiberty?
I just wanted to say, I support the idea of a subcommittee, even ideas that are beyond the scope of how this is currently worked. There are things that we can do, or potentially, things that we can do to improve just elections in general. I know ranked choice voting is something that towns and states have been looking into. I didn't know, again, that would be outside of the scope of this subcommittee, but as Mr. Carpenter said, even if there is nothing we can do, I think establishing a subcommittee to look into it is worthy of some thought and action. So I would support establishing this subcommittee, and would be interested in serving on it until my term expired.
Mrs. Goodrich.
So that was going to be, I was going to address what Mr. LaLiberty just commented on, because I'm, are we looking now at a subcommittee of this board? Previously, you had talked about forming, you know, a committee. So if you're just looking at a subcommittee of this board, and we have two members who want to look into it with, in my opinion, and I would support it as long as we don't cross any lines that would interfere with the town clerk's office or their authority.
Anybody got anything else?
I would just point out that the town clerk runs the election. I'm not looking to run the election, I'm looking to promote the election. The town clerk, nowhere in the law does it say that the town clerk promotes the election. She doesn't.
I understand that.
And as someone who's served on the Board of Registras, I'm well aware of what the duties of both individuals are. So I didn't say I wanted to take over the town clerk's job.
And I didn't, I did not say that either. I'm just voicing my concerns that we don't even walk up to that line and give the appearance, and I said that before. My, you know, I don't wanna give the appearance that the Board of Selectmen is trying to influence elections.
Through the chair, please.
Yes, through the chair is fine. That is far from even anything that I've addressed. We're trying to promote an election, not my election, not your election, not Mr. Bertham's election, not the library trustees, we're just trying to promote an election, or at least see how we can get more people interested in voting. So we say it's not the new normal, but we say, "Well, people don't care." Well, I don't find that people don't care. I think that people don't know sometimes, sometimes people don't care. That's fine, but I don't think the vast majority of people in the town of Auburn bought a house here, don't care about what goes on in town. I think they do. I think they'd like us to not just say, "Well, we're doing what everybody else is doing," but that's not getting it done. So, you know, we can look at non-traditional sources and see if there's a way to get it promoted, and see if we can improve. And it may not even be for this year. How do we know? How do we know how we're gonna get it?
What's the wish of the board?
I would make a motion that we form a subcommittee.
Oh, second motion. And, "Subcommittee for..."
For the purposes of investigating ways to increase awareness and participation in local elections. And if people want to expand that to state and federal elections, I'm happy to look at that, too. I think they have a much healthier percentage than our local elections do, unfortunately, but I'm certainly not averse to looking at those either.
Okay. Motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I'll just...
Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just comment that, you know, that I had said that I would support it, I will support it. I will be curious to see what the subcommittee brings back to this board, because that's as far as it'll go until it comes back to the full board, and I appreciate two members stepping up and wanting to serve.
Is there any further discussion? Being none, the motion been made and seconded. Sharon, have you got that motion?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody clear on their motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay.
So, I'm...
Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Goodrich.
Chairman, are we clear that Mr. Carpenter, did that motion include that Mr. Carpenter and Mr. LaLiberty? If not, I'll make a motion that Mr. Carpenter and Mr. LaLiberty serve on that subcommittee.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion been made and seconded, have Mr. Liberty and Mr. Carpenter on the subcommittee. Any discussion? Any none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Let's see. Is there any public comments? Anything further? Yes, please, come forward.
Once again, Matthew Taylor, 33 North Street. I'd like to make a comment regarding the last item taken up by the board. As I said, I'm new to the town. The only reason I knew about the last local election was because I dropped off a book at the library, drove a different way on South Bridge Street, and saw the sign. So I would definitely say that, based on my personal experience, there's room to improve the output of information from the town to the citizenry regarding the provenance and timing of local elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Has any board members got anything? Mr. Carpenter.
I just wanted to bring up, because as I did communicate with the chairman about the petition that we, I believe we all received, and I am very disturbed that we haven't had the residents in, and I don't know how other board members feel about it, but I strongly feel that whenever a resident or group of residents contact this board, and in their particular case, they specifically ask to be on an agenda, that we should be willing to listen to those individuals. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody got anything else? Eddie, Julie? Nothing? I'll, we've got minutes from, glass is wet, can't see it here now, from October... I'll, we've got minutes from, glass is waning, can't see it here now, from October 28th. We had minutes in front of us. Is there any errors, corrections, omissions?
I'll just say, I can't vote either way, Mr. Chairman, because I was not present.
If there's nothing, then I will accept them as presented, and now, a intended motion.
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And good night.